I show 7:00 PM and tonight we had scheduled a public hearing on the budget world we're in. So rather than opening the formal meeting, we'll open the public hearing. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
All favor? The topic of the night is the budget. And by that, it means we have the option to pass prerogative to exceed the tax cap if we so choose. We tend to do it every year just to have that protective layer there in case we need to. So that would be the opening statement. It's what we have to do is have a public hearing and then a vote tonight to do what we want to do. For those on the board, we now, what, I think we have three or four budget sessions under our belts. And for those in the audience, I'll give a little descriptive and then we can take some questions. Up on the wall I put, I'll try to make it a little bit bigger. It might get a little too big, but let me just see what happens here. The good news with our configurations and discussions, we tend to build a budget by consensus. The way the law works is that the chief budget officer, who would be the mayor, submits it to the clerk who transmits it to the board. But the way I work, we all kind of sit together and throw our ideas in and so we're not crashing and surprising each other in the end game. But the good story, this is the general fund we're looking at and the top line is what we'd be levying. The one column here would be what our levy was last year, last fiscal year. And then the spreadsheet we developed gives what the new levy would be, how much of an increase. It's, it means that's a negative, it went up, even though you see a negative sign in front of it, this number is $10,000 more than that one. So just a refresher for folks, we have the great ability to work with a tax cap this year, which is 1.15%, which in our world equates to about $13,000 we could play with. So the budget we've come up with at this point is increasing the levy $10,000. So that's within the parameters of the cap. But I still think we should consider passing the ability to exceed the cap in case we forgot something or something horrendous we didn't think of comes up and we have to add it in. But I think we've, don't really have that threat to any real extent. So looking at it, you know, as far as the other good news, in my opinion, good news, the assessed value of the village went up a little bit, which is kind of coinciding with the overall slow economic improvement. I'm spinning down to that, it's the formula we have, the new assessed base is 198 million, call it 199 million. I think last year was 194. And what the spreadsheet does here, it takes and does a calculation up here in the pink type of area. That would be the rate per thousand. And the good news is that's actually down from last year. So you're, you're not going to see a huge difference with the typical house. Let's say it's assessed for 100, well, I'll say $275,000 in a village. It'll go, that's, you'd multiply the $6 times 275 and you would get a rate. So, excuse me, you would, you would get your tax levy. So it's dropped a little bit, I think, what was it last year, something 608 or 60?
609.
609, yeah. So in essence, it looks like we can do what we need to do. But that would be the overview. What I am obligated to do is by March 20th, have it to the clerk. So what I intend to do is take public input, listen more to the board and then turn it in. And then after March 20th, we can still change budget lines, but it becomes more of a vote situation than a consensus situation. But that's, that's the story. And then we would take a public comment. Remember something I just said, it's weird, the formula is weird, we see a negative. Not to confuse anybody on purpose, but it's really going the other way. It's a, in a certain way, it's considered a negative budget development, meaning we have to spend more in that line. So what, what were you looking at there, George? Which one?
226A.
Oh. Yeah, okay. I thought that was Trapp doing something over there. He's got a laser beam he's shooting over.
Not me.
What this is telling us, George, last year the town, by contract, was giving us 5-0, $50,000. And this year it's 62, 5. Pardon me?
It's up.
Well.
Up 12, 5.
Just remember, it's an inverse in the formula to do it, to make the formula work. It shows as, it's confusing even to myself, but that's the way to get the formula to work. Yeah, that's fingerprinting, oddball miscellaneous things they do that we can't.
It's up 500. So if you look at, George, if you look at the budget of June 16th, May 17th, and then the new budget is June 17th and May 18th? So you'll see the differences between the two. So it's the first and third column that you could compare. And then the difference is 500, but it's plus. It's gone up.
Yeah, it's, I can find it, let's see. It's an expense, right now we're looking at the revenue pages.
Worried about the bingo.
Yes. Oh, I forgot. George, you want to run up and get the? Sorry about that, thanks Stephen. I got it right here, actually. George, it's over here. Might be able to get it better. Click that little button up and it takes a second to warm up, too. Tiny little tab button there.
Here.
Is that on?
There we go.
Okay, so on your question, this is in the expense world now. And what we do with police is we break it out. Personal services is the heading, but then there's SRO, school activities, different things, town police, town court where they protect the court, then they get some grant money, step money in DWI. And then we put in there a part of the person's time, a support person. That's admin clerical thing. So in the overall, what we're doing is it's going from 207 to 222, 5. What we have is, it's a negotiation year with the union. And with the town giving us more money and certain other things, let's see, what else? That'd be it, and let's see, yeah, so there'd be, the way it works, if they get more revenue from the town, we have to also give hours for that revenue, so we have to reflect.
What was it in 2016?
206, see right here, Don?
It should have been, what I got here is about 307,000.
Well, this is, if you look, this is the village police budget and then the other things they do, I don't have a total.
I'm talking total payroll.
Yeah, I could, I could have the machine do it right here. 308, 5. Take 19 out for the support person, so 290.
What did you come up with?
I just, I just increased the taxes a dollar fifty by putting that 308.
Don't do that.
Let me take that out. Let's see. Wow, let's recalculate.
Fix it, fix it. The next line, yeah, total.
Anyway.
15, I mean, an increase in the fuel on the, I think, one of the.
Under police, we have fuel under a few categories.
It went down a little bit there. Yeah, and I think on the first slide or something, we're showing, the very first one, it was like 1,500 difference going the other way. Now it's 1,500.
Shouldn't be.
Well, is that minus now?
Yeah. Yeah, you, what we're doing, we're, when we budgeted last year, fuel was in the three, three to four dollars, whatever it was a year ago. But it's dropped quite a bit. And the middle column gives us a six-month actual point.
But now you're, now you're picking up to 9, 9,500 for the lease.
Yeah, that, that car, yeah.
So that minus is actually a plus on this one. Why do they do that?
Like I said, it's a negative development against the taxing. It's, on the higher level, it is a negative development, you're spending more, which is, can be considered negative. So it flashes, and it also does, to do the math, it's going to add up the ups and the downs. And if you go to the bottom here, let's see, da, da, da. What we seek to do, we get our revenue, but more importantly is, let's see, I'm in expenses. You have to get revenue and expenses to balance, so.
Well, revenue would include the money from the town, from the school, from grants, the money gifted from Bard.
For police, yeah, but.
Grants from the state, county.
But our general revenue is up here, just to highlight it, we get a pilot from the senior citizens. We get interest on property taxes, people that are in arrears, that kind of stuff. Sales tax.
But you don't break down payroll?
That's not a revenue.
No, well, even on expense. Doesn't really break it down on, under, under the expense either.
Yeah, it does. Every department has a payroll line, you know, it's, yeah, it's all, all in there. Legislative board. It's a type of pay. Mayor. If you look at clerk, let's see, we have to find the line, personal services.
Point ones.
There it is, right here. And what these are, George, nobody's making 33,000. We take some from here, some from different parts to get them to their gross salary, but.
Well, some people wear different hats, different positions, so it totals out.
So the different positions pay, some different budget lines pay into.
But there's nothing that shows the actual, on your system showing what, the break, I mean, correlates it here or it's just all broken out?
What we have is, the treasurer gives us the W2s for all the staff. And we have access to that, what each person in the organization was paid. You know, highway police, admin, court, all the different departments. But these are designed to pick up the combinations of these numbers, pick up the pay for all those people. What we'll do, George, is, and Don and anybody else listening, when I turn in the formal tentative budget on Thursday, that's like the one that goes to print that you could take and look at.
That's when we get, we can get copies of the worksheet, I mean, showing the actual numbers broken out.
That's what you guys got last year.
Okay.
This is still theoretically not the tentative budget. Like I said, I can turn that in Thursday.
Last year was 666,000 dollars. Last year was 666,000 dollars.
Good, huh?
You got insurance, is that the total insurance paid or is that, is that also broken out in other areas sectors as far as 31?
It's allocated. This right here hasn't been, this is the actual at six-month point. So this is the number that gets allocated, some goes to water, some goes to, let's see where else. I think garbage doesn't pay any, but this does, this covers everything, all our vehicles, all our buildings, all our water facilities. So we allocate.
That's showing a.
An uptick, yeah.
Well, you know, well, it says minus, so actually it means a plus of 335,000 dollars.
Yeah, if you look, 31, 5 to 35,000.
Does that include the buildings, employees, different departments, the police insurance, the whole? That encompasses 30, 35,000 is what your total insurance bill or is it all, is it broken out? I mean, is it another area, other columns also?
The other columns would be, there's a workers comp for employees that's separate. And then that would be the only insurance that is different, and that's the workers comp. This picks up vehicle liability, our general liability, employee bonding, buildings, wells, tanks. It's everything, highway vehicles.
Yeah, if you, you said last year you're working on breaking it out, it seems to me insurance because it's different policies, unless it's all under one policy through one agent, because it's different types of insurance. You've got like house insurance, auto, auto insurance.
This is.
Like, you know, I don't know.
This is the thing I just said.
That includes the wells, everything as far as the well buildings, the village building, all structures that the village owns, a garage.
That's all in here. Like I said, there's workers comp and the health policies are not in that number, they're further down. Here's workers comp, fire, medical insurance, right here.
Different highway police transfer?
Yeah, we've created a program to fund, so we have something in the bank if we have to buy capital equipment for highway or for police.
But the other insurance, that's an inclusive number that doesn't break out to different areas. Or is, is the village write one check for that amount or does it write different checks for different, different areas?
The big, the, the one that started your questioning?
Yeah.
That's one agent, one package policy.
It's in the binder.
Five inches thick with, if, you know, Cindy runs off with the money she bonded, if some, Dan crashes a highway truck, that's covered. If the building burned down, it's a whole package of our insurance, except the workers comp and then the health.
That includes the insurance on the police cars, like the total replacement deal that you had, you know.
That's in there, yeah.
I've never heard of that before.
I know.
It's a good thing.
It sounds like a very expensive policy.
How do you get total replacement on a seven-year-old car?
It's a smart decision.
What do you pay for that policy if you're getting total replacement?
I don't think it's a lot of money, Don, I think each police car, if I remember correctly, is only around $700, which is what the average person.
What we'd like to do is, we'd like to see that, you know what I mean?
Well, we'll show it to you. The caveat that I could tell you is, the car has to be less than, I think it was seven years old. And in our case, it was one of the couple cars that fit that category. I mean, it could have been worse, we could have lost one that was older.
Which car? Because the engine was blown on the other one.
Yeah, the Charger's the blown engine, the Crown Vic is the one that spun off the road.
Wasn't that a 2002?
No. I think it was a 2010, it was, it was in the bandwidth to be classified.
I thought it was older than that to fit into that number.
No, it's, the Charger was the oldest one, I think, that we had. It is the oldest one, besides the old Popeye machine, but that's, anyway.
So how many vehicles do we, you know, I guess you're in the process of replacing those two.
We are, yeah.
And normally, the most I've ever seen on patrol at times is two. I'll give you like three, five new vehicles plus the clunker.
Yeah, we plan on getting rid of the clunker, this would be our goal, and give us four operational vehicles.
It's also all the highway equipment, too.
The insurance you're talking about?
Yeah, it's included in there.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, a policy like that, if this individual buys a policy, but 100% replacement or something like that, it's going to be, you know, it's like buying collision and, oh, we don't care about that, we're just going to give you the, you know, no matter what it is. A used police car has gotten almost no value at all, like a used taxi cab. So I'm just wondering how they can come up with that unless, you got to be paying on, because they don't lose on their deal, on the insurance. So it's got to be like three times what you'd pay for a regular car.
I think we pay about $100,000 for 40,000 in coverage, don't we? No, come on, John, what, what are you getting at? We, we insure, it's, it's a benefit of being insured at NYMIR. Come and look at the books, it's not, we're not, it's not like a trick, we don't over-insure to crash our cars.
Well, it seemed like, that would be what you would do if you had that kind of a policy.
We were half joking internally, you know, it's, but, but it's designed to, we don't overpay for insurance. There's a couple people that play in the market, NYMIR and Selective Insurance are two that really insure municipalities. And we look at both.
That wouldn't be a policy through the regular insurance company, that would be a policy through NYMIR or through a government agency or something like that, right?
No, NYMIR's a private, it's, it's an insurance company.
Okay.
It's just.
That they handle the whole, basically anything with your municipality, it goes through them. Your vehicle, your trucks, your tractors, your, any, any vehicles that actually, because you couple it together, it's like fire insurance. Where's this going?
Yeah, they sell us a package and then it's competitively priced. We shop it periodically and we're totally happy with it. And I don't think we should look, I, I think you're trying to find a boogeyman in an unbelievable positive result. And that's why I'm being a little cynical with you. When I saw the endorsement, I was like, wow, this is awesome. Otherwise, we would have been down a car, getting an ACV like Donnie says on a seven-year-old car, what's it worth?
Especially after it's been damaged.
It's a, we think it's a win-win, but we'd be more than happy to show it to you guys. Anyway, I think, anymore on the public hearing part?
How much is it up from last year? You know, you said that was what?
Each year?
What was the total on the, you know, the payroll? What's the difference? You were what?
Which payroll do you mean, Don?
What were you last year, 570 something?
No, no, no.
Total payroll was 666. Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, what we do is, we have a 1.15% tax cap. So payroll and certain things have to dance within that range, too, so. But if they're getting more revenue, that means they're getting more work in the police world. And they, we have to give the hours to pay for it, so. Anyway, the tentative budget will become firmer, then you can look at printouts and do your comparisons. This is a little tough for you guys, it's, you know, we've been looking at it for four, four weeks or so, but. But you did pick up the high points, you know, it's. With that being said, anything else? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. And what we could do, why don't we open the formal meeting? George, could you bring me back or you say the pledge allegiance really loud so we can?
There you go.
What's that? Okay, why don't you bring it up here, just because it will sound kind of odd, we'll all stand up and nobody will know what we're doing.
All right.
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, we just had a public hearing and we'll move into our regular business. I thought, board, we would, we have our engineer here, he will approve some minutes to do a few things and then I don't see any Bard student reps. So we thought we might alter the agenda a little bit, get the engineer up and talk that part of it and then let him get out of here. I don't think it's snowing out yet, but those watching it a week from now, what's that? Watching a week now, from now, we're in the middle of a blizzard warning here in Red Hook and we've done a lot of prep work. We can talk about it later in a meeting, but we think we're ready to go on that side, working with the county and the utilities and different folks and the fire company. But anyway, as far as minutes, we have a regular February 13th meeting, then we had a February 16th workshop, then we had a 23 February budget workshop and a March 2 and a March 9. I've gone through them, we had, if you remember our last meeting, Ari covered for Cindy, so she developed it in the format we're used to seeing. Then the workshop and the other two. I've been through them and made some edits, are there any other additions, alterations, corrections? Is there a motion to approve the various sets of minutes? So moved. Is there a second? All favor?
Aye.
Let's see. What we could do, Cindy, do you have your treasurer's report handy and I'll start getting my paperwork out? You want to do that first and I'll?
Treasurer's report as of March 13th, account balances, general fund, 444, 448,644.97. Water fund, 102,912.54. Trust and agency, 24,729.41. Materials management, 7,002.05. Petty cash, 32.20. Village green, 4,136.88. Hard Scrabble, 6,439.34. Health insurance, 9,601.98. And monthly expenses, general fund, 116,334.49. Water fund, 14,716.15. Trust and agency, 24,729.41. And materials management, 3,931.77. I just wanted, like the board to note that in the budget versus actual, I've also started to submit, even though there isn't any activity, a capital project. Something submitted, so I'll do it every month. Well, actually, next month it'll stop because the project's going to close.
The water phase two, you mean?
Yeah. Right, March is going to close?
Well, it, we have to vote on completion, a couple steps, but we're waiting. There's still theoretically to be upfront, it's probably with the spring, we'll let spring really hit, do some more work that has to happen. And then I would envision the formal, real closing in the true sense of the financial world with USDA, early to mid-June. A few reasons, one is things won't really be done till then, I think that would match our financial planning in the water department better, so. Anyway, looking at the report, so the balances, are you feeling okay this time of year, Cindy?
Yeah, everything big has been paid. I do have, we're doing very well.
And kind of like in the water, that's kind of a low spending number on water this time. I know we fixed something the other day, but.
That's not even in here yet.
Oh, that's not in that. All right, is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Let's see, segue to Robert here from CT Mail. We had a couple things, sewer project updates, we just did a water update, update of sorts, but I saw something really interesting from our engineering people. Yeah, the second, the last part of phase two water has been the SCADA work and electrical work over at the well fields, the pumping and the monitoring devices. And they have something now, I wish I could put it up on my screens, I don't think I have a screen image of it, but for the audience, they now can get advised and they can see visual of switch positions and tank levels and everything right on their cell phone. So if something's starting to happen, not only do they get an alarm, but they can actually get a visualization of, it's as if you're walking into the pump house, opening up the door and looking physically at switches and everything. Maybe another day Robert could show it to us, but I was thinking of trying to get it up on the screen for everybody, but I don't think we can. I don't have the app on my computer, but it's, I guess who gets it? You and the operator and a few folks. But I was pretty impressed by it, and so it's almost done on the electronic side. But to switch to sewer, we'll call it a completion of documents heading here, just to recap a few things. You will recall, late December 2016, we got the USDA ARD commitment for three-point, excuse me, I'm thinking of water. We got the 4.9 million dollar total commitment, 3.7, which is an alone, 38 years, 1.875% interest. And with a co-commitment of 1.2 million dollars in outright grant. And which we celebrated with great aplomb. And what USDA gave us since then is some more paperwork, I put it out on your desks for the meeting. What it is, reading through it, there's two forms, I sent them both to our council who's responded to us. One is the grant agreement. And the other is what's called a loan red. And the other is what's called a loan resolution. To refresh everybody's memory, we did pass the bond resolution, um, back last year. And, um, what this is, we, the bond resolution gives us the blanket authority to go to various funding sources. And we, um, but as USDA promised, this, this looks like to be the one that we will be pursuing. And to piggyback with this is that EFC, New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, gave us, um, we have a closing coming up March twenty-third. We're processing a lot of paperwork there, where they'll be doing the short-term funding, again, as a reminder, at that zero percent interest. So that gives you the construction money and then all indications are we would then close the loan back when work is all done with USDA under their letter of commitment. But they've asked for us to review these two forms and, um, I'll explain it and Brent can jump in if he has to. But, um, one is, if you look at the grant agreement, it's essentially delineating the three point seven million from the one point two million. And it goes through some lengthy wording. This is not a resolution or anything, it's just an agreement. Essentially details that we have to abide by the conditions they put forth and keep records. And essentially, if we don't spend the one point two million, they're not promising to give it to us. They only, the way it works is we spend the three-seven and then we start eating into the one point two. All indications are that we'll use it, but they're just stating that here that if you don't spend it all, you only get what you spent essentially. And, um.
Basically, they, we had to spend the amount that's been obligated as a loan first. And then any additional money would be coming out of the grant, which is a one point two. And if we don't use all that money, then we don't use all that money and it goes back to USDA.
So our goal would be, um, to not go over budget, but to not save them any money either. In other words, we would want to use everything they're offering.
Plus one, right?
And like I've told other people, other meetings, I think we have a good track record between us, the USDA and our engineer partners. Phase one water was one point two four two million. We did that within budget. Phase two water was three point eight million. We did that within budget. So we're stepping up into a higher level, but I'm fully confident. But anyway, this, one, the, the grants agreement just asked for a signature, so I've crafted a, a resolution. And then the, the one that's titled loan resolution is only a two-page document. As I read it, it's really just restating that the amounts they've offered us, if you look at page two compared to page one, you see page one, the loan is three point seven million. Then on page two, little paragraph seventeen, it delineates the one point two million dollar grant. So essentially, they're taking commitments they made in that letter to us in December and just asking us to re, relook at it and, and fully understand what they promised. A couple of things in the loan resolution, to me, the line number six, we can't sell, transfer lease or otherwise encumber the facility or permit others to do so without the prior written consent of the government. Government in this case is the federal government, not the village government. What that would mean if at some point it was to be turned over to, say, the wastewater authority or something, we, we would have to advise and get consent from the federal lending agency.
And generally, you can't sell the property or turn it over, carrying a debt, debt obligation with USDA. So there's no waiver process similar to EFC. So this is ours for thirty-eight years.
What they do, essentially, if you look at number nine, they ask, we are to comply with all state and federal laws and regulations and to continually operate and maintain the facility in good condition. It's much like when you take a mortgage on your house, the bank wants you to keep it in functional and good enough shape so they're not losing on their investment. I don't know if you've had a chance, like I said, what I had done was, let me just look at my piles. I thought we would do, have Cindy give the one loan resolution a number, just so we could track it internally with our numbering system. And then, um, we could write that on our, our sheets. Do you have that, Cindy? Could you give us a number?
Seven.
Seven? So it'd be seven dash two oh one seven? And there's a lot of boilerplate legalese here. We did have counsel read through it. I don't know if anybody wants to read it and point at anything else here that you're seeing. But essentially, we're acknowledging that we've passed a, a bond resolution. And this would be where we're headed as far as it looks to be our recourse, our solution, as far as the loan we'll take. And it's stating the conditions, but this is not a closing, this is not, um, it's just, it's pretty much stating conditions we have to meet if we agree to take their loan and their grant.
And this is no indication that we're fully obligated to take the loan.
Right. The other thing, board and members of the audience, um, it's boilerplate. It's not like lawyers sit on our side and their side. It's just, um, this is how they present it to all their constituent grantees. I don't know if the engineer had thought, but just so everybody knows, in phase one and two water, we didn't ever have a grant from USDA. But we did comply with this loan resolution. It's the same thing they use for all their projects. And I think, yeah, it gives them a little teeth, for instance, paragraph, um, thirteen, to provide the government at all reasonable times access to all books and records relating to the facility. Access to the property and the system, again, it's like the bank talking to us, it's, uh. Any questions? What I thought I'd do is, if it pleases the board, Cindy gave us a number. I would like to move this loan resolution forward tonight. And, um, like we said, it's not linking, locking us or committing us, it's just that we understand the terms of letter of condition and what the terms of the loan will be. So I would offer that, what the board has in front of them is titled loan resolution, our numbering, seven dash two oh one seven. I would ask for a motion that we approve and pass, acceptance of this loan resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, the other part, waste, system grant agreement. What I had built should be in your packets. I guess this would then be resolution number eight. This is, um, doesn't need a recorded vote like the other one. Essentially, I'm saying, uh, the village of Red Oak contends to continue its pursuit of funding sources for the municipal sewer project and has the funding commitment, letter of conditions from USDA and New York State EFC for both loan and grant money for the Red Oak Sewer Project as per the preliminary engineering report. And then, um, whereas the process involves review and signature of documents to define our obligations regarding the offer from USDA RD, then I cite the four point nine million less the one point two million grant for thirty-eight years at the interest rate, we talked about one point eight seven-five percent. Per their letter of conditions and funding determination. Whereas by municipal law, the mayor has executive authority and council has reviewed the documents. Be it resolved that Mayor Ed Blondell is fully authorized to complete and sign requisite grant and loan documents as necessary to complete the paperwork required by USDA RD. So that's picking up this part. But I just want you all to be in a loop. And again, like we said, it's, um, it's just delineating the amount of the grant as compared to the amount of the loan and conditions there too. So I would offer a motion or a motion for a resolution. We called it number eight, um, to approve the water and wastewater system grant agreement from USDA RD. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we see Robert at the board there. We kept him standing. So I hit my part of completion of documents. He has a part that's completion of documents as well. Essentially, it's the map planning report, an infamous term we are learning more and more about. It's a little different from water world. But, um, they're about, what, ninety-nine to one hundred percent done with that document? Maybe you want to talk a little bit about it, Robert, for us and, uh?
Can we just back up just real quick?
Sure, yeah.
Can we make sure Doris gets, um, the copies of these resolutions for the binders? Doors.
Doors, yeah.
Sorry.
Certainly. Mr. Flores, you ready?
Yep.
Whoa.
So as Ed was talking about, the, um, key step here is a report titled map planning report, which is, is out there. As the name implies, the, the concept is provide a map that shows who in the service area is going to get provided sewer service. And then the plan is the plan of finance, so what are the people that are in that included in the map going to pay on an annual basis? And the report is obviously the report that documents it all. So that's the map planning report we're talking about.
And I believe, I believe Ed has a map here to show you.
Edit there, Robert, you got it?
Yeah. Got there a little fast. But as, in general, the map, uh, are the business properties and any residentials that are caught up in between on Route nine, so north and south Broadway and Market, east and west Market. There we go.
Yeah, we had this out last month in paper format, like in the PowerPoint. George was here and he was looking at it in depth. I have one and I've ordered a bunch more from Minuteman Press, but, uh, if, Donnie, if you wanted to take one tonight, you could have one.
So the, the concept is, uh, the properties that, that have frontage on, on those roads go down to the existing wastewater plant that's on Red Oak Commons. That's, yeah, that's the circle area there. So Morgan's Way is the intersection of South Broadway and Morgan's Way. That's how you get down there. So it encompasses all of Red Oak Commons and the developments that go with it and then those properties. So the map looks jagged. That's because we're getting the properties that front those streets and then we're just following the back lots of those properties.
Yeah, and how many pages thick is that, Robert?
Well, this one's kind of on the skinny side, so. Only have the, the one-inch binder, right?
Okay, the binder's thicker. But it's a requirement for us and what, DEC, can you tell us why we're doing all this?
Right, so what, when you're providing sewer service in a, in a village, um, one of the requirements is to look at the, the village as a whole, as a district. Uh, so how would you provide service to everybody, which the, the map does? And there's been a, a series of previous reports that have studied that. And providing sewer to everybody in the village is, uh, you have to show that it's how you would do it. But you don't, you're not obligated to do it, you know, on step one. So that's what the report goes through. It identifies how you would sewer the whole village. And then identifies what we're planning to sewer now, which you could call it a phase one or, uh, you know, whatever fancy name you want to call it, I guess, but. So, so we identified the, the properties that are going to be served. And that's, as we've talked in the past, uh, we would, so the step system, so you utilize a septic tank and effluent pump to connect all the properties. So what this shows here is septic tank, effluent pump, and then a inch and a half line comes out of there. And then they connect in the street, start with a two-inch line. For the most part, we're going to have two-inch lines. And then when the two-inch lines come together, they'll become three-inch line. And then, um, that's, that's about as big a pipe as we're going to need, which you think about, that's pretty small, so. Altogether, we're looking at about, uh, something just shy of fifty thousand gallons per day. If you add up all of, all the properties and their annual water usage. We did, as we had done it before for two thousand and fourteen, and then we did it again for year two thousand and sixteen. And the numbers were pretty close. It's always some, some number in the, just shy of fifty thousand gallons per day. So the.
So what, from my perspective, when we, back when we passed the bond resolution, about the same time, we also passed a resolution that would enable the map plan and report to be developed. And like we said, a few meetings now, it's an interesting process. We have to do all these things concurrently. We've got the funding commitment. We have the EFC, um, closing March twenty-third, we said. And we're working with legal to take property transfers of the existing sewer plant at Red Oak Commons. All these things are, and what we have to do is set up a public hearing. We're crafting our, um, sewer use law. We like our body of law with water use. So we're working with legal on that and we're not there yet to set a public hearing, but it's, it's a piece of the project. But we are incurring some legal costs there. They are within, a lot of it's budgeted within the sewer project, so that's a good thing. Things, um, Robert was talking, it's still hanging around, a hundred and twenty-five properties that we're talking about in the central part, the business area. But within there, there's thirty-seven private residences. And they have developed a, um, a very extensive spreadsheet, which lists all the property owners that affected. And we, we just mailed out to all them a notice to come in to some meetings. We're booking four meetings over the next month or so. Alternating Wednesdays, some in the morning, some in the evening at Library and or Elmandorf. Where we did one already at the, um, Black Star Social, it was under the auspices of the Chamber and the EDC. We had relatively good turnout and, uh, we present this package and we listen to questions, because it's still in some design, design phase. We're able to listen to suggestions and, uh, things can be tweaked a little bit. But, um, and, uh, so we have the first one coming up. It's actually this Wednesday night. We're kind of wondering what the storm will do to that one. We don't have, the postcards are out before the storm was announced, so, um.
The good thing is people could walk.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the village and there will be three more at least, so, um. But in, in essence, the map planning report, could you, so you submit it to us technically, we can page through it. To be honest, it's very technical, I think, you know, it's, uh, but the overview is.
Yeah, so, so the, the main parts, right, is the map.
Yeah.
So who, who's going to be included? These are the people that would get sewer bills in the future, which brings to the plan of finance. We've established capital bu, capital budget of four point nine million. And then you have an annual O and M, O and M costs, which is all detailed in the report. So the typical, uh, user, a single, broken down to a single-family home, would pay seven hundred and eighty dollars per year. Approximately for the first year. And then use, but the, the actual cost will be based on usage. So if you use more than a hundred and fifty gallons per day on average, uh, you know, you would, you could pay more pre-year.
Let's dwell on that a little bit. Because that's what we're, what you do when you take the loan packages with the interest and the length of time to pay back. You can get the capital cost and then we know how many folks can get in, you know, with the system we can design. So it gives you a divide, dividend and a, so you end up with a number to get your average per benefit user capital cost. And then O and M is a projected budget to run, insure and different things, a sewer plant. So those are the two factors you add in and then bring it out. And like we said, we introduced it out and we're getting a sense on the street that it's well-supported and people are really interested. And the, the pitching points, like we've always said, there's the ecological side, protecting the aquifer and maintaining clean, safe drinking water. And then what we're seeing is it'll enable existing businesses to expand and attract new ones, to make the place have more jobs and be a more interesting place to live and work. And it helps concentrate future development in the village, enhancing the attractive walkability. In other words, right now, somebody could build something outside where they have more room to put their own septic in. But this will kind of impinge, this will make it more interesting for them to do it right in the village. And, and then things I don't put here, but I firmly believe that any one property owner in the district will see a net increase in the value of their property. It's, uh, each one of them have various phases of non-existent treatment to maybe more current, up-to-date treatment. But I think they would all be happy to get standardized. And one thing in our package, folks, is we're leaning toward giving everybody in the program, meaning it's to be part of the cost basis, a new, uh, septic tank, because we have a wide variety of dry wells to who knows what, to some new stuff out there. And part of the funding mechanism, to the credit of USDA, they want us to use, like we did in water phase two, all, um, US-made steel. And then, um, in many of our situations in the center of the village, we're going to demand, one reason we're putting our own tank in is, um, they are designed and engineered to be driven over. I don't know, what's the term you used, Robert?
Traffic loading.
Traffic loading. Because if you look at overhead maps of the center of the village, I think a lot of people are parking on septic tanks and dry wells and different things. are parking on septic tanks and dry wells and different things. So so we're, the current thing is if we put and replace all their tanks, it's within the dollars allowed, we'll know, we'll have a standard product. There can be different sizes depending on the occupancy, but we'll know they can be driven on, we can get our pumping equipment in with uniformity, and it'll have steel components that will not rust out. Within the rebar part, when one thinks of a tank, one thinks concrete, but there's a rebar piece in there, so. But we're moving this direction and so I don't think we're ready tonight, Robert, to approve the Map Planning Report. I think the board needs to look at that a little bit and give input if they, you know, whatever you guys want to do.
Are there copies available for the board members?
They made six copies. We have to.
We get it in everybody's box, right? So I can.
Yeah, no, they were on the conference room table a week ago or so and then.
They seem to have good legs, right?
I'm looking, anybody, did anybody grab one at any of the meetings? I mean, you're welcome to grab them, but we're.
This one's on, you know, notes or anything, so it's a free one to, anybody can take it tonight.
We'll leave it in Cindy's office overnight and then we'll track down the other ones.
Well, I'll run some more copies for sure.
I think the village archivist might have one, I don't know.
Yeah, I got mine.
But what else, Robert, updating in your world? Yeah, we did my documents. You talked about your documents.
On the basis of design report, that's still to be done, but that's submitted to what?
So that part gets submitted to DEC. The technical agencies are going to review this. And actually, we have four in this project. So we'll have the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We have New York State Environment Facilities Corporation, which also has engineers. We have USDA Rural Development Engineer also will review it. And then Dutchess County Department of Health. So those are the four regulated agencies that'll review and approve, ultimately approve all our documents. The basis of design that you're referring to is the more technical report that specifies exactly what equipment we're going to use, what capacity it has, and that it complies with the standards that, you know, that govern these kind of things. Ten state standards is what we typically refer them to.
And also has what Ed was talking about, the American Iron Steel certifications and everything else in there.
Yeah, so that's part of, that comes with the requirements from the funding side of
All right. Anything else for Robert while we have him here? And then I guess we'll try to do the Wednesday thing. Can you bring the slot, the screen?
Screen to, yeah, to project on, yeah.
We have the boards upstairs.
Yeah, the detail blowed up, blown up once, yeah. Yeah, so we just encourage anybody who has a question that's in the service area to call us and, you know, give them the details of how to apply to them, right?
And again, the thing we assume, but we should announce too, is if you're in the service area, you're in the benefit area, and those are the people that have this cost to work with. The general property folks outside the gray area on the maps are not being charged anything. It's not going to be assessed against the whole village. And it's just out of the most fairness, the benefited users, the ones that are going to get the direct value and the increased property value are, be the ones in phase one that would be paying for it, so. And we do have plans if we can extend and enhance and, you know, we're trying to work that into our design too with some other ideas, but right now, that gray area is what we're talking about. Thank you, Robert. So let's see. Back to our more routine part of our meeting. We have the treasures report and let me just think of that for a minute because my mind is always dwelling on numbers. So we're, we have two weeks left in March, plus or minus, and then April and May. So what's that, eight, 10 weeks to go in the year? As far as, let me skip me while I hunt for some paper, but Steve, do you have paperwork there to read, anything you want to do? Or are you looking at the police report too? Let's see.
No, I can do the water.
Can you dig? I didn't pull mine to the top here yet.
Water report for February 2017. During the month of February, the water treatment plant treated 6,389,000 gallons of water and an average of 228,000 gallons per day. Water treatment plant used 50 gallons of liquid hypochlorite solution for the disinfection of water and an average of 1.78 gallons per day. In February of 2016, a leap year, water treatment plant treated 7,605,000 gallons of water, averaged of 262,000 gallons per day. Three samples were sent to the laboratory for bacteriological testing. All three returned a negative result. Conservation tip, as spring approaches, consider replacing gaskets, packings and sink faucets, sink faucets and hose bibs to prevent leaks before they happen. These parts are usually available at the hardware store for a fraction of the cost of replacing the entire faucet.
Good advice, Steve.
I just want to point out too that if you compare what we used February to what we used last February, we're actually using about 34,000 gallons per day less this year and about 1.2 million gallons per month less than we did. And that's hopefully as a result of phase two, fixing those water leaks. And so we are seeing some results and positive benefits from that repair in phase two.
Good. We've been looking for it. And Robert's trying to sneak out, but we did have one leak. I'm just trying to find, there's a real interesting picture. There it is. Board and the audience, I don't think anybody saw this. This is, we have the pipe stamped into evidence up in the police department. This is in the back of the new CVS where we, the developer laid a two-inch supply line here. And this is a coupling, a big nut that joins another two-inch pipe. And something is clearly awry. It was not our crews, it was a subcontractor to the project that did this work. So this hole is, according to our people, eight feet, this pipe is eight feet below grade. So our guys were down with, you know, collapsed boxes and different things. So it was so, in my mind egregious, it looks like there was something wrong with the connection fitting and this has actually eroded. Remember the pipes we saw from our, the old days project? Like we had the pitting and the holes from jets of water and sand blasting on itself? This is the same thing and this was installed in September 2015, 2015. So we've saved it, we're having lawyers look at it for us. It wasn't a horrendous cost to replace, but it's still thousands of dollars. So we're going to look to see if we have any recourse on this.
He said it was the worst water break he's roped on in 25 years.
Really? And the reason I brought it up is Robert and I were talking today, this didn't happen last week, you know, with this pitting and corrosion. Pitting's the wrong word, but this corrosion's the wrong word. With this erosion and degradation, that had to have been going for a while. And if it was eight feet down, I was thinking, that means it had to jet up to be noticeable, eight feet above grade. So we're going to work on that. It's kind of an interesting little story. That happened, what, last Friday that the pipe came in, you know, in our sessions. Anyway, so I hope maybe that 228 had even come down further. We'll see what, I think Robert said today what it was down significantly, but I wasn't quite sure how we could evaluate that.
Friday, when they shut the valve and fixed this, the flow dropped to about 200,000 gallons.
Kind of bizarre, isn't it? The probably almost newest pipe in the system had that happen.
You said 200,000 gallons?
Dropped 28,000.
I find it amazing that the copper could erode that fast. But we'll keep you apprised on the legal developments. We'll see what, we're not sure if we have a good theory or not, but we'll work on that. Thank you, Steve, for your report.
Did, do we have the copper piping itself?
Yeah. Yeah, I, maybe you didn't catch, when it came in, it caught my eye so, it was so egregious, I was like, you got to be kidding me. It looked like the things that were in the ground 100 years. And so we got Patrick out, we got an evidence tag, like if you were like the knife that stabbed somebody or something. We put a wire through it and labeled it and he's tracking it and like, so we have a chain of evidence. And, you know, the operator Brett was giving a statement, this was one in the hole, this is what we cut, I brought it into Village Hall, you know, so we didn't run it over, we didn't drop it, you know, and so it's.
Can we, can we get a quality report of the actual copper?
Well, they have a theory. The engineers have been tasked to work on it. I don't want to say too much on the record because it might be litigation, but I can fill you in on, you know. I can just tell you it happened and we're looking at it and then I.
All right. Thank you.
Anyway, I guess now you can sneak out, unless you're so interested. All right, so we did water. Just so you know, on water, with the storm coming, I also did ask, you know, make sure propane is full and different things like that. So we're looking good over there. Mr. Trapp, would you like to go next?
Oh, certainly.
Okay.
Well, let's see. We had a recent meeting of the Dutchess County Planning Federation Board of Directors. I am the current president and I got nominated again for another two-year term. So I'm locked in for something for a little while here. So we have pretty well-firmed up the three spring classes that are coming up. I don't know that the notifications have gone out yet, but they're going to be pretty good, going to be something that Brent and I were fortunate enough to kind of touch on a long time ago, religious uses and things like that. It's a hot buttons class, so.
By Loufa.
Yeah, yeah. So it's going to go through a lot of things that planning boards typically don't get a lot of chance to address, but when they come up, they have a lot of regulation involved in them. So it's not something that they generally go for, so. And all these classes, I think so far, the three that we have planned are going to be presented by the DOS and it saves us a great deal of money because all we have to do is pay for copying and things like that. We don't actually pay for them, the lawyers, to come down and do the presentation, so.
So who goes today? Our people, planning board people? I missed that part.
Yeah, planning, zoning folks, so, yeah, it should be good. It should be coming out really soon. We're going to have to have, we'll have one other meeting to firm everything up. We've got some other folks that want to do presentations and they have to present to the board before they then, you know, we consider their presentation going out as far as education for all the Dutchess County boards. Let's see, what else? I think that's it on that front. I've worked a little more on the fees. I'm just going to go ahead and take a swing at the fees and just go ahead and print it out and give it to you.
All right.
If you like it, fine. If not, I'm sure you'll tell me, right?
Sure, sounds good.
So, and I've added a few more things to that which we have now. How are you, Cindy? Good. Let's see, in the Village of Red Hook Building Department Monthly Report, we have five building permits issued, four certificates of occupancy issued, one certificate of compliance issued, three municipal searches were conducted, no orders to remedy, no stop-work orders, no court appearances, no complaints. Let's see here, currently, they're working, I think, our man's working at the Chocolate Factory. That's a whole cluster of inspections over there that they're having to deal with and it, I guess, I was involved in a little bit of the discussion, it's rather complicated over there, the way that it's all cut up. And some of the egregious points are a little maybe suspect, so they're trying to, he's trying to get his arms around all of that. I'm sure he'll do a good job. He's a good guy. We'll get that all wrapped up. Planning board met and they had two items. They had two site plan, one site plan application was approved to, at 7518 North Broadway, and one application was tabled to the March meeting, which is coming this week, right? Thursday, yes.
Sixteenth of Thursday, yeah.
No zoning board meetings and, let's see here. And the past month, $1,100 was taken in at the building department. That's not a bad number for a slow month, so we're doing all right. Everybody watch yourself tomorrow, it's not going to be pretty.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Trapp?
Um, I think that's probably enough.
Okay. We'll let you take a rest for a minute.
Thank you, sir. Probably make me read something later, right? That's what it is.
Get that South Carolina Django, let's see.
Thank you all.
Let's see, I guess I was avoiding doing my part of it here. Looks like a police report is my first task and for the month of February, total of 332 incidents, breakout is 256 in the village, 73 in the town, in the village of Tivoli, three. We should make a note to fax the mayor of the village of Tivoli to the last page of the report so he can be aware of that. UTT's 96, that's Uniform Traffic Tickets, 96, it breaks down 67 in the village, one parking ticket, 29 in the town of Red Hook. Arrests, 15, eight were in the village and seven in the town. I do know, it looks like if you look at the town count in the various categories, it is perking up a little bit. That's because that extra 12.5 that we talked about, that kicked in with the town's fiscal year, so it's really, I'd say that it's a little more time being spent out there at the town's request for, they've been complaining about speeding and different things on some of their streets, I don't know if you call them streets, lanes and roads in the town. So it's good. And on the budgeting side, we're already generating, when we looked at that budget together, the 62.5 was for next year, but that's already starting to flow in already. So it does drive up some payroll this year a little bit because they're already out there and billing the time to the town. So, and then like I said earlier, I'm starting talks, the two-year union contract with the PD is coming up at the end of June, well, end of May, actually. So we're having preliminary talks on that. Keep you advised as always. What else do I have? Personnel, can't think of much going on there. And then insurance and all municipal departments, we talked a lot about insurance before. And I think that's it from line item two there. So we'll go to, we did Trapp, we did Zarchuk. Let's hear about some material management and things celebratory.
Well, would you like to start with materials management or celebratory stuff?
I'd go with the boring stuff, materials management.
Well, what's the boring stuff?
Materials management.
I'm actually going to start with Energize New York.
Well, good. Can you wait a minute? Hold.
He's so demanding.
I was going to put something up for you, but we're not totally choreographed here.
Okay.
There you go.
So, similar to Solarize New York, which was last year, we now have Energize New York. And we had a meeting, we're at informational session last week in our beautiful facility. Energize New York provides energy assessments for residents and helps them find a contractor. And depending on your income level, the assessments and some of the work is free. I actually got an email today saying that I was approved for a free assessment.
Wow, good.
So I am, I am ready to go. The complete presentation can be found on Panda and the website, as you can see, is energizeneyork.org. Is that correct? I think I spelled it wrong on the thing.
Let's see. Dot org, yes.
Dot org. So it was a really kind of fascinating presentation that what you might think would help your home might not be the best thing, like windows in particular, they said, you know, bang for your buck is not, might not be the best way to do it. People automatically think, oh, I'll fix my windows and everything will be fine and it's a little more complicated than that. So you can go to the website and check that out. Materials management for the month of February, we sold $2,295 in garbage tags. We paid out $967. Um, materials management for the month of February, we sold two thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars in garbage tags, we paid out nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. We had four point six seven tons of single stream recycling and eight point two four tons of garbage. I'm gonna bop to the library, um, from the library, their Battle of the Books two thousand seventeen teams are forming now. They have a middle school team and a high school team, um, the books are in and ready to be checked out. Battle of the Books is a national reading program that marries fun and sportsmanship with a love of reading. Uh, their teams will meet weekly for discussion, games and trivia practice, their first meeting is April tenth. Please contact Michael over at the library for details, the phone number of their is seven five eight three two one four. They have three events slated with the Alzheimer's Association over the next three months, uh, and they're gonna have spring break camps, this is great if you're a working parent. Um, there are activities, grades kindergarten through eighth grade, and their focus this year is on Earth Day. Um, if we have a lawn in April, uh, our egg scramble will be Saturday, April eighth, um, at eleven AM at the middle school lawn, um, thank you to the Red Hook Police Department and the Red Hook Library for all their hard work. Uh, the rain date or snow date or we don't have grass date will be Saturday, April fifteenth. Um, and then a great event that we don't really plan, um, but happens is Apple Blossom Day, that's Saturday, May thirteenth. That's run by the Red Hook Rotary, um, so they can be contacted for vendor information and band information and we just sit there and stroll through the day and kind of enjoy it until hard scramble comes along, so.
We're consultants for that one.
We oversee it, but, but we don't have to deal with the forms, that's key, so that's all I got.
Good, thanks. One thing that was crossing my mind as we were reading, I know we, usually late April, we do that Town Village Cleanup Day where we roam around.
I'm trying to remember if I knew the date for that, I know, um, one of our citizens has implemented kind of a free cycle weekend, which is the Saturday after Apple Blossom Day where if you're in the village and you have free stuff, you can put it out on your um, front lawn and people come by and do that, I think there's a Facebook page for that or, or Facebook presence for that, that you can put your address up if, if you have free things. And the cleaning weekend, I'm trying to remember if I saw a date for that, I thought it usually was the weekend before our events.
Kind of think April twenty-sixth-ish, somewhere around that timeframe, anyway, we'll fill you in.
We'll figure it out, next meeting.
We have time, it's, it's a good thing because the winter, you get like a debris pile here and there of
Weird stuff on there.
cardboard and plastic and things that makes the village, we usually get volunteers and we join up with the town and do a lunch, I think, and a little live music and walk around. So, guys can help us out there, we, for us guys that can't bend over, they give us sticks, we can, not sticks, uh,
A little paw.
Grippers, you can just, uh, and, but anyway, thank you Jen. Yeah, the Energize thing was pretty impressive, what I was putting up on the boards, we allowed, it's essentially mainly driven by the Town of Red Hook Conservation Advisory Committee, that's the photo here that shows up, but our building lends itself to a good crowd and the audiovisual side, so we offer it here and uh, I was pretty impressed, it's essentially nicer to fund it and um, I got this within a day or two of offering our, you know, actually the event, you can see, they are pretty well organized and pretty PR conscious, you know, they had the photos, they named the players that they needed to name, um, but.
Again, I mean, this was what, last Wednesday, I think, so I filled out the application and I got the approval started Monday, so you know, a couple of business days, boom, there it goes.
Yeah, like Jen said, they'll do a free evaluation and then they give you a task list and you don't have to take any of them, you can take some of them and then there are some funding options, it's, they're not all free as far as the actual repair, upgrade things, but um, they, then it, what's unique about this, they give you as part of the program, an energy coach, so if you're not a great tactical house designer, builder, whatever, there's somebody to stand in your camp and help you talk to the contractor, so you're not really being oversold on anything, which I thought was pretty good. But anyway, thank you. Let's see, looks like we did everybody but Deputy Mayor Kovalcheck, you ready to go there?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Uh, I'll start with the Village Green Month Reports, uh, current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts. As of February twenty-eighth, ours follows, community beautification, we have two thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents, the shade tree contractual expenses, six thousand seven hundred and the Village Green checking account is four thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. There were no Village Green meetings held during the month of February, um, although that's changing this month because we're gearing up for our annual spring planting and Arbor Day celebrations, which is tentatively set for Saturday, April twenty-ninth, and this is always pending when we get our trees from the nursery. Um, we're in the process now selecting sites and species of trees, place the order and schedule everything going up, and the village also received a letter from the National Arbor Day Foundation congratulating, uh, and I put in quotes, the Village of Red Hook on an earning recognition as a two thousand sixteen Tree City USA. The residents of the Village of Red Hook should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. Um, and along with this recognition from the National Arbor Day Society, our council, there'll be a annual recognition ceremony held in Albany on March thirtieth at Albany Hilton and I believe I'm attending that one, so it's a, it's a luncheon and breakfast and we get a new flag and stickers and stuff, so it's, it's always fun and it's.
Build a lot of flags.
Free lunch, so it's good stuff. Uh, the Village of Red Hook Highway Department Monthly Report, the village's snow ordinance is still in effect through March thirty-first. Hopefully this will, this is the last month I'll be reading this, um, because it expires on the thirty-first of March, hopefully, snow will stop then too, so no parking is permitted on village streets from eleven PM to six AM in our New York State highways, which are Route one ninety-nine, Route nine, from two AM to six AM during the same period. Um, when snow and ice are operations, removal operations are underway, any vehicle parked or abandoned on any street may be removed by or under the direction of the Red Hook Village Police Department or any other responding law enforcement agencies and the costs associated with vehicle towing and stores will be charged to the vehicle's owners. And also, the owner and occupant of every building or lot in the village with an adjoining sidewalk are required to remove snow and ice within twenty-four hours of a snowstorm. At the discretion of the, of the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Highway Department will remove snow and ice left unclear at a cost of two dollars per linear foot and this cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levying. And again, just to remind people who had new sidewalks installed or repairs to the sidewalks, either based on water repairs or during phase two, um, the, please refrain from using salt or calcium products for deicing. Uh, these products can cause significant deterioration of the concrete. This is, if you had work done in the last eight months, it usually takes about a year for the concrete to fully cure, so we're trying to recommend people not using this real heavy calcium products because it will eat up the, the concrete. Uh, the village highway department did remove snow and ice in the general business district on February fourteenth. Um, assisting the village in snow removal operations, um, by, by providing labor and or equipment, including, included Frank Vosberg, excavating paving contractor, Dave Vosberg, Jake Stickel, Agnes, excavating contractor, Landworks, um, Dean Kent was part of that and Fast Tracks. And, um, the Red Hook Village Police Department also assisted with providing some, some protection to our employees, but I think they're gonna have to show up and a little bit more force, and we did, do have them on, on notice right now, so in the event of the big snowstorm that will happen tonight and tomorrow, we may see snow removal operations on Thursday, which will be what, the fifteenth? The Highway Department has assembled a list of water infrastructure repair projects, um, for the board's consideration and then I won't go through all of them, but there's quite a few, the biggest project being, um, on Benner Road east of Fraley Street, we're, we're looking at installing eight new services and two fire hydrants and this was not in the scope of work of phase two, so we'd like to complete that and that's been used as part of our budgeting for the water. The village highway department is also preparing a list of trees on village rightaways to be inspected by an arborist, pruned or removed. Um, I do have the list and we're reviewing it as we speak. There was no sales of scrap metal during the month of February, uh, total revenue generated for this fiscal year is two thousand four hundred and ten dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, since we've been doing this for the last ten years, we've raised twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents and anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the clerk's office or the Highway Department and the Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force and infrastructure monthly reports are extensive and I'll spare you all on that, but the Red Hook Village Sewer Projects Meetings were held on February first, third, tenth, fifteenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh in the Red Hook Village Building. Um, the New York State Governor's Office is proposing with their fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen budget, a two billion dollar investment either from the New York State budget or a bond back for drinking water and clean water projects, so when that comes available, we may be looking at, at doing that, but it won't probably give us any more than what we already have from USDA and what we've already applied for through UFC. We also looked at the status of the Red Hook Common Subdivision Proposal and the Red Hook Common Sewer Works Corporation Land Treatment Plant Conveyance to the Village of Red Hook. Um, we're currently reviewing, as Ed had mentioned, the proposed sewer use law and we reviewed the draft map planner report that Robert presented. Um, we're also looking at and preparing a series of stakeholders informational meetings, which Ed described, um, first one being on Wednesday night. Um, we reviewed and revised the Red Hook Village Resolution Sewer Project Phase One Engineering Contract and Related Costs. So we actually passed those already. And also, we're discussing methods and procedures to add new connections, new phased areas in town or Park County sewer districts to the Village of Red Hook Sewer System. Um, we did have a, as Ed mentioned, a, a stakeholders meeting sponsored by the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce at the Black Star Social on February first, that was well attended, we had a meeting with USDA on February fifteenth to go over some items with the sewer and then we also had a meeting on February twenty-fourth at the offices of Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, which is the Department of Health, um, just to talk about some interim solutions to get businesses in while we're waiting for the sewer to come. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two, we've met on February fifteenth, which is our monthly meeting with USDA and we reviewed some of the, the forms for expenditures and these were primarily for the prime electrical contract. And so all the numbers are listed for your review and they'll be posted on the official minutes. Um, the two thousand fifteen Community Development Block Grant, we saw some outstanding closeout and final reimbursement documents to take care of, hopefully we'll take care of that soon. And the intermunicipal task force met on February third, tenth, seventeenth and twenty-eighth and we are currently reviewing proposed Hamlet Business District up in Upper Red Hook, um, we're looking at a proposed zoning ordinance for photovoltaic systems, regulating commercial solar farms. So we've been talking about this for a while, but I think we're making progress. On the other committees that I sit on, the Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaisons. Meetings were held on February eighth and twenty-second here in the village building. We looked at, um, and discussed with the EDC, the New York State and Dutchess County Regulations Regarding Airbnb. The EDC was in, in contact with Ron Hicks and Mary Kay Verba, who's the Director of Dutchess Tourism, for some advice on these issues, um, and we also reviewed the status of the Red Hook Sewer Project. Um, the Community Preservation Fund, um, there were no meetings of the CPF Advisory Board. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of February twenty-eighth is seven hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And there are quite a few properties in the Village of Red Hook that do qualify for some of this money and, and the report can be found on the town's website. There were no Red Hook Together Meetings, um, the Salk Hill Watershed Community met on February fifteenth at the Almendorf and we heard from Lori Eustad and Monique Segarra from Bard College on a presentation and a discussion regarding the micro hydropower on the Salk Hill. And we also discussed updates on the barge anchorage on the Hudson River, the Salk Hill Monitoring Program and the flood resiliency work that are being worked on right now. The Northern Dutchess Alliance, both Ed and I attended the annual meeting and awards ceremony on February eighth at the Beekman Arms in Reinbeck. Uh, the Northern Dutchess Alliance Year in Review was presented by Mickey Strawinski and Mary Kay Verba and the State of Northern Dutchess Panel Discussion with community leaders, Joel Griffith, Heath Tortelli, um, Robert McKean and Elizabeth Spintia were on the panel. Um, there was also election of the Northern Dutchess Alliance Officers and there were two awards presented, one of the Commitment of Community Award was presented to Lori Eustad and the Charting Our Course Award was presented to Todd Erling of Hudson Valley Agribusiness Development Corporation. And just the last one, um, the Village to Village Trails Committee. I met with Kat Viega on February seventeenth to choose a location for the Village to Village Map and Information Board, which will be placed on the south side, the north side of the existing Red Hook Chamber Information Kiosk just on east of the parking lot and that's it.
Thank you. One thing that jumped out on first page of his EDC talks there, he talked about Airbnb and so forth. Received a communication from the county executives, sounded kind of funny, we do periodically have to talk about the Airbnb here in the village even. County apparently sat with Airbnb directly and has some tacit agreement where they will, Airbnb users will voluntarily be directing a four percent bed tax into the county. So I congratulated the county, but I also said, is that a separate bucket than a sales tax? Because if you remember, the numbers we put up, sales tax did trend up even more than we budgeted, which is a good thing, we would like to see more sales tax, but apparently the bed tax is a different bucket than the sales tax, so there's no direct selfish benefit for us, but it's good to see the Airbnb, I think, is spending a little bit.
Would we get any of that revenue?
No.
Some of the other things that were discussed was, um, health regulations, border health, fire, same kind of standards that, and in.
Yeah, part of my.
Our typical bed and breakfast and, um, that was some of the concerns with.
Yeah, we get faced with that, we have two B and Bs that are pretty well, pretty good size and do a fair amount of business here and.
And they're regulated.
Pardon me?
And they're regulated and.
Yeah, so they're not quite on a level playing field if somebody decides to rent out the back bedroom or something and so in one of our next steps in zoning and planning worlds, I S A County, I think it should be something bigger than each little muni deciding their own process, it seems like it could come, maybe Jay as President of the, uh, Federation could unify some approach or something, but anyway. But it was, overall, Airbnb is waking up a little bit.
We've talked about it, just in terms of some sort of, at least prototypical regulation that could be set out there so that the municipalities could then mold it to be more appropriate for their locale.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea because it's probably common everywhere and uh, up here, I think probably Northern Dutchess, maybe a little more so than Southern, but we have more sites and more traveling people to Bard and things.
Most of them aren't bad, but I mean, there is no standard for fire safety and egress and things like this and that is what makes a lot of people very nervous.
Yeah. Yeah, plus if all of a sudden your neighbor starts renting out five rooms, what used to be their house, you know, you're gonna have traffic and people you don't know, you have different things, there's ups and downs to it, so. There's ups and downs to it, so. Anyway, we were off to the regular business section. We attacked a few things. Item number two, just a reminder, March 21, which is a day and a week from today, right here in this room, will be the village elections for two trustee seats that are up. We have apparently four candidates signed up and designated to run. Cindy controls and runs that election. It'll be paper ballots, like we've announced, and we've had Jake build. You want to describe what he built, Brent or Cindy? I haven't seen it yet, but I heard it's...
Beautiful, big box.
Huge metal. It takes two men to maneuver it, so, yes. Thank you to Jake. Also, tomorrow is the last day that I can accept absentee ballot applications.
It's the 14th.
Probably a moot point, because I think Stephen gets it to Panda tonight, and I don't know if it'll hit tomorrow. Yeah, so that's what, noon to nine on 21 March. And on the election, like we all know, from a budget perspective, we try to save money where we can, and this was an attempt at that. The county has the high-tech digital scanner readers and printing the ballots and things for a small election, worth thousands of dollars, whereas this we can do for a couple hundred. Not a lot of money. But thanks to the clerk and to the highway man who did that. RHFD contract negotiations, we've been meeting with them in workshop sessions, like the last one was the February workshop. Quite frankly, we're still at impasse. I have some more thoughts, ideas, which I can present at our workshop with some budget numbers on Thursday. I did reach out to see if we could find a quote mediator, you know, somebody that could just listen to both sides, and I don't think our demands are outrageous, and theirs are coming closer to ours, so I think it might be good to have a third-party neutral help us, but I haven't been able to come up with anybody, and I don't really want to spend more money on a negotiator than we would be talking about in the contract. So, we'll talk more about that Thursday. Let's see, maybe we'll move to number four. At the onset of tonight, we had the public hearing and with regard to the tax cap override. There's a template you guys have on your desks. Like we said, historically, we pass it. Unfortunately for villages, everybody tends to think the 2% tax cap is the reality, but it's... Last year, what did we deal with, .68, I think? No, .11, .11. Prior year was .68, I think, and this year, we're thinking we're rolling in it with a But it's really never been 2%, I think, except for the first year, and maybe that wasn't even, but it does force us to look hard, which we would have been doing anyway. But for a step here, we had the public hearing. This, I guess, technically Cindy becomes a local law. Do you have a number for us here tonight? What we do is, we file it, and then, lo and behold, if we, with all intentions, out there is standard cap, we then rescind it later in a month or two. So, the board's very familiar with it. Essentially, to exceed the cap, we need a 60% vote of the governing body. You do have it in front of you. It's entitled Local Law I, law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law, Section 3C. So, again, for the record, what we have to stay within is the 1.15%, which to us means like $13,400 or something like that. So, I don't think we need to read it all. I would ask for a motion that we adopt Local I of 2017, as on your desks. Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
While we're in the mood of resolutions, Cindy was passing something around. It's more in the realm of the treasurer. It's kind of a graphic you have in front of you. I'll describe it, and Cindy can jump in, but certain of the trustees participate in the New York State Pension Plan, and there's an obligation where they have to, the treasurer reports to officials, to the New York State Retirement System, the work hours, the record of activities essentially for those people. The two that are in the plan are trustee Norris and Deputy Mayor Kowalczek. And the data and the computation here is done by the treasurer. Essentially, she's attesting that, this is her record-keeping, that she sends up to the state folks. The top part says, "Be it resolved at the Village of Red Hook," and it gives a location code, must be our identifier, 40240. "Hereby establishes the following standard workdays for these titles and will report the officials to the New York State and local retirement system based on their record of activities." So, it obligates those people that are in the system to keep some track and something where the treasurer can base a true record result on the hours spent. So, it's in front of you, and then Cindy filled out the bottom. Clerk of the Governing Board, State of New York, certify have compared the foregoing with the original resolution passed by such board. Set my hand and seal. So, it's really something, do you need to insert any more data or detail here, Cindy? As far as...
No, just, it does have to be posted for 30 days.
Up on like a bulletin board or something?
Yes.
Okay. Guess it's kind of like LoSAP or something, so.
That doesn't pay.
But I guess, give it a number, Cindy, would be number three?
Nine.
Nine, nine. So, Res 9, 217. I would offer motion that Resolution 9-2017, entitled Standard Workday and Reporting Resolution for Elected and Appointed Officials be put on the floor and voted on. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? It seems more procedural to me.
It is.
That'd be my discussion. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you going to vote on the local law?
I thought we, I thought we did. Which one?
I thought we did.
We did.
You did?
All in favor? Should you make the motion, I second it.
Yep.
Okay.
We're good.
That's all right?
Yes.
EFC, we talked about retirement, we did. I think we hit the high points on the required regular business, the committee reports. We can scratch, I think, the Personnel Executive Session was just lingering there, and a template, we can scratch that. General business from the board?
Give him the business, boys.
I think what I would say is, we alluded to it at the beginning of the meeting. When we came in, it was somewhat sunny, and I saw some loose guy, and I don't know what's out there now. But we do have consultations underway. We've been talking with the county executive and the emergency planning department down there in the county, and it doesn't come up too often, but I have rehearsed, locally here as mayor, we can declare local states of emergency. Generally, the plan is the county would do it, sounds like the state's headed there, and then county would do it, we would do it. Our proclamation would just govern our jurisdiction, you know, it's on... But I know, I think in the hurricane years, we did some, we do have the normal night parking that Brent reminds us of, but with the prohibited night parking, but we might have to enhance that further to Route 9 or something if it's terrible, and we have the authority to do that. It gives, when you do a proclamation, just so you know, you also have to give an order. You just don't say state emergency, you have to say what you want done. So, generally, we do parking, and it's kind of interesting, just you can, as a mayor, establish a curfew, you can prohibit distribution and sale.
Come on!
Sale and distribution, doesn't mean you can't drink. I mean, you better have it in your house before I do the order.
Had a friend, Sipolis made a ton of money.
Sipolis is closed right now, right? Rush on, well, there's a competing guy, we shouldn't hurt competition. We can close places of amusement and assembly, so Jay, we're gonna shut down your after-hours club.
There we go. I speak easy in the basement.
And then, we can, this is kind of interesting, regulating the purchase, storage of flammable materials, and in case people get a little wild, I don't know what that's about, but usually, we do something to just control parking on the streets that we're trying to clear. What we're doing, the office, the admin office will be closed tomorrow, but the PD will be open. We talked to the new fire chief, and they're meeting tonight, and we have an 11 o'clock conference call tomorrow with the county. And as far as our big exposure, we know, is the Red Hook Commons. It's basically a senior citizen's residence, and some of the people are, in some shape or form, disabled, somewhere on oxygen. There's no generator there, and they do have an elevator, so we remind the fire company that, and this place has a generator, the school has a generator, and the county has Red Hook, Red Hook, brainwash was red, Red Cross on notice and on standby. They're not triggered yet, but they would be, that is beyond our control. The county pulls that trigger, and the school becomes the most local place where people could congregate. But historically in Red Hook, it seems most people are pretty good at sheltering in place, and that's the recommended, suggested best way, at least you're in your safe place unless something really bad is happening. So, we'll be here working, you know, the staff will not be, but highway will certainly be, and police will be.
Will this be a warming station, as it has been in times past?
Yeah, it could be.
An electric station if people need it?
If need be, I don't think we'd keep it overnight or anything, but it'd be during the, the real overnight would be the schools if it's a Red Cross world, but if somebody had a charge, say, an oxygen pumping machine or something like that, they could come here and sit here. I think with the fire company, they do have a generator, but they're not, they're in their construction phase, and they're not really ready for anything, so it would be us. Town Hall has a generator, I talked to McKean, and then the school has a generator, so it'd be those are the main players. But I think we're about as ready as we can be for it, and I hate to spend all the money, and hopefully, it tracks somewhere else, but not looking that way. That'd be my thoughts on general business. We had public comment in the public hearing, but any more public comment from the public? Do you still have your speaking machine?
You brought up the Airbnb...
Yeah.
...thing. I think that's gonna be a bigger problem than you're looking at because of zoning issues. This R10,000, that's the commercial use. I think the village would have to, at the very least, require a site plan, which is kind of cost prohibitive. Also, if students start renting out their apartments when they're not around, they could be violating their own lease agreements that they've got, as far as having unknown people paying them subletting it out. You might have to be aware that might be illegal, violate their own leases. But I think the biggest thing is the safety issue, and then the other thing is, in a residential area, I don't think the other neighbors are gonna want this going on, so if you write it up, it's gotta be only in a commercial area or something like that.
You know, it's, the things you've mentioned are the things that have crossed our mind in discussion phases, and it's a, we've tended to push it, even the things you just raised, I think are a little bigger than one village or a town even, it seems like a county or something should help and make it more uniform, so you're not having hodgepodge quilt work regulations.
Well, ideally, the state should do it, but it does violate local zoning laws.
Yeah, and it came in, periodically, I go online to look and see what's out there, but what I half envisioned is probably some quasi-attempt, but I keep reminding the county and the state people, we would like their help, you know, it's, but you being ZBA, the points you hit are the points we talk about, too.
Well, it's ones that we'll have to deal with somewhere down the line.
Yeah, it's, you know, Pat from the Red Hook Inn comes over periodically, comes to the EDC, too, I think she came in there, and so we try to, but each point you made, I would agree with, so, thanks. I think we're at the point where we need to pay some bills. Hey, let's see the voucher pack. I'll have to sneak you guys in another day for vouchers. Okay, yeah. What we could do, do we need the motion to pay bills after audit?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we generally rely on Mr. Kowalczek to see if we're done for the night.
I think we're done. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
I think you should make a motion.